Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity for us to do another live study session. Regardless of, you know, anybody who comes in, regardless of what branch of service they're trying to join. We ask you, Lord, that you help them throughout their entire process, conquering the Razvab, doing their physical at MEPS. Um, and then signing a contract, Lord. We pray for safety for them and their military careers. And we trust you from beginning to end. We just want to say that we love you so much and we appreciate you. Jesus mighty name we pray. Amen. Amen, amen, amen. Go ahead and comment in the comment section. I can do all things, alright? I can do all things. As always, I'd like to start with mental warmups. I think this is why I was on here for two hours yesterday, okay? We spent a lot of time here. Maybe we might spend, maybe we might spend some time here as well today. Let me see. Let's start with. Let's go back to multiplication. Let's go back to multiplication, alright? Alright Reyes, I can do all things. That's what I'm talking about. I can do all things. Riley Johnson, I see it. I can do all things. Caitlin, I see it. I can do all things. We can do all things in Jesus' name. I know that's right. Alright, so let's do this. Let's go ahead and jump into this multiplication. Times tables. We have eight times ten. Eight times ten. Fun fact. Anytime you times anything by ten, you add a zero to the number, alright? You add a zero to the number. So in this case, we have eight, add a zero, giving us eighty. Alright, so as I go along, I'll be trying to give y'all time to uh to answer the questions as well. So eight times ten, we got eighty. Four times twelve. I was saying yesterday, don't be shy to type your answers in the in the chat room, alright? Type your answers, whether you're right or whether you're wrong. You got uh obviously some battle buddies that are also trying to join the military. This is a judgment-free zone. Alright, this is a judgment-free zone. So go ahead, type your answers. And uh even if you're wrong, we're gonna try to help you get on, back on track, alright? So four times twelve. Your twelve times tables is just something that you're gonna have to learn, right? So four times twelve, I see forty-eight. Let's go ahead and see if we're right. Boom, forty-eight. Nine times two. Nine times two, that should be an easy one, alright? Nine plus nine, or nine times two. We got eighteen. Cooking. Eight times nine. For whatever reason, this, this one gets a lot of people. Maybe because both eight times tables and nine times tables is a little tricky. Alright, I see somebody. Let me let y'all catch up. Alright, Mario is saying seventy-two. Right? Are y'all going to war with Mario on this seventy-two? Or no? Or is Mario by himself? We got eighty, we got seventy-two, we got eighty-one. See, I'm telling you, this one is a tricky one. We got eighteen. Man. Unless I'm tripping. Are we on the same question? This is a. Let me give y'all a second to catch up. Is this a lag issue or is this a question issue? Alright, alright, alright. I see some more seventy-twos coming in, alright? So let's run with it. Eight times nine, I'm going with seventy-two. Boom. Ten times ten. Come on y'all, let's get it. Ten times ten, what y'all got? Ten times ten, ten times ten. Mario saying one hundo. Eric is saying one hundred. I'm agreeing. Alright, remember I said, add a zero, alright? So if we add a zero to ten, we're gonna get a hundred. Boom. Four times eleven. Four times eleven. Alright, forty-four. I'm going with it. Three times two, that's easy. We're running with six. Come on, give us a, there we go. Twelve times five. Let's see who knows their twelve times tables. Twelve times five. Twelve times five. Eric is saying sixty. Mario is saying sixty, so y'all seem confident. Riley is saying sixty. Kelly is saying sixty. Alright then. Alright, we going with it. Boom, alright. Good, good, good. Five times eight. So the five times tables should be. Okay, that's why everybody was saying uh different answers. It was lagging, okay? Hopefully it uh, hopefully he catches back up. So for some people, it's lagging. For some people, it's not. Alright, five times eight, I'm going with forty. We're about to change this into division here shortly. Ten times twelve. Alright, whenever we are doing tens times table, we are going to add a zero, just like that. Add a zero at the end, whenever you see tens, ten times tables. Eight times eight. What do y'all think it is? Eight times eight? Eight times eight. See, I think it is uh. Let me wait, let me wait like five, ten seconds, man, to see what, what answers are coming up. I think there might be a little lag for some people. Okay, eight times eight. We're on eight times eight. Okay, eight times eight, we got sixty-four. Boom, eleven times eight. I already said, whenever we're dealing with elevens, we're going to take that number and double it, at least for numbers one through nine. Same thing again. We're gonna take that five and we're gonna double it. Bam bam. Alright, eleven times table should be very easy. Alright, fifty-five. There we go. This is a tricky, tricky one, cuz a lot of y'all get stuck on your nines and sixes. Alright, so nine times six. Nine times six. Nine times six. Alright, I see some people saying fifty-four. Seems like uh, seems like we're almost unanimous here. Alright, let's see. Boom, that's what I'm talking about. Sweet deal. Let's do like five more, alright? So we got five times three. I would say that's pretty easy. Alright, let me go ahead and throw the answer in there. Fifteen. Alright, three times five. We're gonna throw that answer back in there. Fifteen. There we go, three times seven. Y'all know your sevens times table or your three times tables? Alright, twenty-one. What is going on here? Alright, twenty-one. I'm rocking with it. Alright, anything times zero is zero, easy. Five times six, I don't remember if we already had this one, but you should know your five times tables, right? Thirty. Anything times zero is zero. Zero times twelve, alright. Zero times eight, still zero. Ten times six, already said, add a zero at the end of that six, giving us sixty. Come on, give us a tough one so we can end this uh multiplication, right? Zero times two. And here we go, eleven times four. Hmm, that's not the hard one I'm looking for. It would have been good, except zero times thirteen is still zero. Alright, they're not gonna give it to us. So we're just gonna jump into division instead. Alright, y'all go ahead and solve this last one. Uh four, four times nine. Four times nine. Four times nine. Alright, couple of y'all are saying thirty-six. I agree. I agree. Alright, good stuff. Good stuff. I think we're thinking along the lines of math now, right? So let's do this. Let's change this into division, alright? Forty-two divided by seven. Remember I said yesterday, a lot of people can do multiplication, but when it comes to division, for whatever reason, you know, they find it difficult. Think of it this way, what number times seven is forty-two? What number times seven is forty-two? I see some people say six. I see some people say seven. I see some people say sixty, zero. Is this, is, are we thirty? What's going on here? What's going on here? Forty-two divided by seven. Alright, what number times seven is forty-two? Let me go ahead and put it on there, like Abigail and Jose is saying, six. Alright, thirty divided by ten. Thirty divided by ten, or what number times ten is thirty? Alright, let me tell you. This is why I say to throw your answers in the chat section, right? Because from the minute it hits your screen, if you're solving this from like zero to five seconds, I would say you're in good shape, alright? You stand a good chance at doing well on your test, alright? Because you're seeing the, the numbers and without any delayed time, zero to five seconds, you can solve it. If you look at this and you're like, hmm, twelve divided by six, and it's taking you like it's taking you like ten, fifteen seconds, that's not bad. It's not bad, but there's room for improvement, alright? Some of y'all are saying two, so let's go ahead and put that in there. Now, if you're over fifteen seconds, fifteen to thirty seconds type of thing, or in that case, a lot of y'all might need to either do long division, or you know, make little tick marks. Then we need help, okay? Excuse me. We need to practice our, our multiplication times tables, at least from zero to twelve, okay? Get them memorized, cuz it's going to save you a lot of time. And come to find out, the test that you're embarking on taking is a timed test, okay? So fifty-six divided by seven, or what number times seven equals fifty-six? What do y'all think? Alright, Jose is saying eight. Abigail is saying eight. Y'all got their back on this, or no? Or are we going with a different answer? Messiah is saying three. Are we going with three instead? Alright. Eric is saying eight. Alright, we're going with eight. We're going with eight. We're going eight. Barney is saying eight. Alright, boom. Sixteen divided by eight. Let me do this one for you. Two times eight is sixteen, boom. Twelve divided by three, what number? Oops, what number times three equals twelve? What number times three equals twelve? Alright, we're going with four. Forty-eight divided by twelve. Forty-eight divided by twelve. I think it was yesterday I was talking about, don't get intimidated. Don't get intimidated by big numbers as it pertains to math. Alright, don't get intimidated. Forty-eight divided by twelve, or what number times twelve will give you forty-eight? Quattro, four. Alright, that's a good one. I don't remember if it started on this, but forty-two divided by six, what are y'all going with? Alright. Alright, let's put that there. Alright, I see some sevens popping up. Alright, so let's go with seven. Let's run with seven. Alright, let's do a speed. Let's, let's do a speed run, alright? As soon as it pops up on your screen, let's go. Five seconds or less, start throwing the answers out there, alright? Thirty-six divided by twelve, let's go. Thirty-six divided by twelve. Alright, thirty-six divided by twelve, we got three. Eight divided by one, five. Four, three, two, one. Alright, eight divided by one is gonna be eight. Or what number times one will give you eight? It's gonna be eight. Okay, next. Alright, one thirty-two divided by twelve. Alright, I already got it. Let's see if y'all got it. One thirty-two divided by twelve, okay? This is, this is what I mean by, it's good to have it memorized, alright? Because this will take you some people like thirty, thirty seconds to a minute to have to do it on paper, okay? So I see twelve, I see eleven. Come on y'all. I know we got more people in the chat. What do y'all think? One thirty-two divided by twelve. I see thirteen. Twelve, eleven, thirteen. Nobody's agreeing on this. Alright, I see elevens. Is it still okay to do it by paper? Yes, especially in this, in this time, alright? Do it, do it on paper. Alright, so let me tell you, twelve times twelve is one hundred and forty-four, alright? Um, twelve times twelve is one hundred and forty-four, and twelve times ten is one hundred and twenty, which is too low. Twelve times ten is one hundred and twenty, that's too low. Twelve times twelve is one hundred and forty-four, that's too high, alright? So twelve times eleven, right? If you had it memorized, like either Cam or Kame House is talking about, will give you one hundred and thirty-two, alright? Let's try to get these things memorized. Fifty divided by ten. Fifty divided by ten should be easy. Five seconds is up. If you didn't guess five, retrain, alright? Fifteen divided by three. Fifteen divided by three. Sorry, I was multitasking. That, my five seconds is up. Oops. Y'all almost caught me slipping. Fifteen divided by three, alright? If you was about, if you was like me and was about to throw three in there, wrong answer, alright? It's five. Alright, twenty-four divided by six. I was reading uh, I was reading somebody's comment, what's the fastest way to do problems with, what's that say? Is that big numbers? The fastest way to do problems with big numbers is to have your times tables memorized. Number one, that's the quickest way. Um, for example, when I look at this question, twenty-four divided by six, it's not that I'm doing math in my head, it's just that there are numbers associated with this that I automatically think of, alright? Which is four, okay? Six times four is twenty-four, or twenty-four divided. So it's not to say like I'm using much of of my um, I keep doing that. It's not like I'm using much of my mental faculty to solve the question, like looking at this, five, five and five, alright? Five divided by five. Um, easy, right? Five divided by five is what? What y'all got? Anything divided by its, itself is always gonna be one, just so y'all know, okay? So the quickest way to have, the quickest way to solve problems with big numbers is to have at least zero to twelve multiplication times tables memorized, alright? And then you have at least a, a frame of reference, okay? Hope I, I hope I did justice on that. Alright, thirty-three divided by eleven. Come on, let's get it. Let's speed this up. Remember I said, five seconds or less. Yeah, eighty divided by ten. Come on y'all, come on, come on, come on. Eighty divided by ten. Some of y'all's, eh, one, three, alright, alright, eight. Alright, four divided by two. Alright, let me leave this one on the screen. One thirty-two divided by eleven. Five, four, three, two. One thirty-two divided by eleven. Lord have mercy. I'm seeing a lot of different answers. One thirty-two divided by eleven. Alright, are we going with uh, with what Abigail is saying? Twelve? I think we just had this. Oh no, maybe we had one thirty-two divided by twelve. I don't remember. I don't remember if this is the same question that we just had. Alright, nine divided by one is itself. Okay. One hundred and ten divided by ten. What y'all got? Alright, Mario says eleven. Abigail says eleven. I don't wanna mess up this name here, but says eleven. Jose, eleven, alright. Perfect. Alright, fifty-five and eleven. We got five, ten and one, we got ten. Um, two and one, we got two. Fourteen and seven, we got two. Thirty-six and, and uh, and three, we got twelve, alright? Come on, give me uh, give me a good one to end it on. Forty and four, we got ten. Nine and nine, we got one. Come on, forty and ten. See, whenever we're about to end this, this session, yeah, you know. Alright, sixty divided by five. Sixty divided by five, what y'all got? Sixty divided by five. Not the one that I wanted to edit on. It's really not, you know? But let's see what y'all say. Alright, sixty divided by five, or what number times five equals sixty, alright? If you know ten times five, that'll give you fifty, that means you need to go higher than ten, alright? So for those of y'all saying twelve, spot on. Spot on, spot on, spot on. Okay, yeah. Alright, we'll end it on this one, I suppose. Alright, fifty-four divided by six. Fifty-four divided by six. Fifty-four divided by six. I see some people say eight, some people say seven, some people say nine. Are we going with nine? I see three people saying nine. So nine times six, y'all are saying is fifty-four? Okay, let's see. Hey, if y'all say, if y'all say that's what we going with then, that's what we going with. Great job, great job, great job. Alright, and then of course, we should know forty-eight divided by six. Spot on, spot on, spot on, spot on. Yep, perfect. Perfect, perfect. Alright, so we're definitely thinking along the lines of math. You guys are uh, you guys are doing very well as it pertains to multiplication and as it pertains to division, alright? Yesterday, we started something, laying the found, like the foundation of arithmetic reasoning work. Alright, um. We were looking over, you know, questions that that was written in word form, and also questions that were written in number form. Let me see something, let me, let me see where we're at. Alright, so let me just use this as an example. What is the product of sixteen and twenty-two? Let me see, let me see. So sometimes what I do is I test the waters, right? Just to see if we need to go harder questions or simpler questions, right? So using this question as a frame of reference, right? What is the product of sixteen and twenty-two? The first thing that you need to ask yourself is what, what is product even mean, alright? Somebody uh, somebody answer that question for me in the chat. When we look at the word product, what are we talking about? What is the product? What does that mean, product? What function are, is being used here in this um, in this question? What is the product of sixteen and twenty-two? What function is happening in this question? So can somebody answer that for me? If you don't know, you can go ahead and put IDK in the chat, okay? Hey, it's alright. That's why we're here. So if you don't, if you don't know, go ahead and put IDK. We got uh alright, so we got some say multiply, some say add. Some say multiply, some say add, okay? Alright, so whenever we're seeing the word product, okay? Let me see if it'll allow me to write on this thing. I hope y'all can see my, I hope y'all can see my pen. I guess not. I guess it's not gonna allow me to write. So whenever we see the word product, we're talking about multiplication, alright? Hold on one second, y'all. Let me see if I can get this to uh, to work so we don't have any issues for the rest of this live. Alright. Let's see if it'll allow us to write. There we go, we're cooking. Alright, what was I saying? Whenever we're talking about the word product, we're doing multiplication, alright? So what is the product of sixteen and twenty-two? What we're going to do is we're gonna multiply these two numbers together. Sixteen times twenty-two. Can everybody see that on their screen? Alright, sixteen and twenty-two. I can see it on my screen, so can y'all see uh? Okay, alright, so. Let's multiply this. How we're gonna multiply this? Two times six is twelve, alright? Which is why we were just doing the multiplication eh, warm-up. Alright, we're gonna carry our one up here. Two times one is two, plus one is three. Alright? This is not the final answer, alright? Some of y'all get too hasty when it comes to math, right? The minute you solve one piece of it, you're already looking in the answer key to see if like, okay, maybe the answer is D thirty-eight, alright? Because it's the closest thing to what I got. Alright, don't rush it. So, now that we did the first number here, we're gonna put a placeholder zero here, and then we're gonna multiply. Two times six is twelve, so we got our two. Carry our one, we're just gonna use this one here. Two times one is two, plus one is three. Alright, what we're gonna do here is we're going to add these two together. Two eh, plus zero is two. Three. Sorry, three plus two is five. Alright, and then, three plus zero is three. Okay, so we have three hundred and fifty-two. Go to our answer key, C is going to be the correct answer. Alright, C is gonna be the correct answer. Any questions on that before we move on to the next question, alright? Because I want y'all to be grasping how to do the, there's gonna be times where sure, memorizing the times tables is, is all cool, but there are gonna be times where you're gonna have to do like long-form multiplication, long-form division. So, if what I just did there doesn't make sense, now's the time to be asking eh, to be asking question. Alright? I take it as, take it as y'all are tracking. Alright, let's see, what else we got? What is the product of fourteen and seven? What is the product of fourteen and seven? Let me give y'all some time. Matter of fact, since I said that the ASVAB is a time test. Let's see if we can make this. Alright, y'all, there's a timer on the screen. Alright, I want y'all to try to solve this question before that timer runs out. What is the product of fourteen and seven? This is, listen, I put together this, this, this study session to try to help y'all out, okay? Try to help y'all out, like make y'all feel like some of the pressure that's on, so that way so that way we can get better, right? So some of y'all are saying D. Some of y'all are saying D. I see a B here. I don't know if that's for this question, but let's run with it. B. Eh, ninety-eight. Alright, timer is out, so let's go, let's solve this thing, alright? What is the product? So first and foremost, what function are we using? Are we dividing? Are we multiplying? Are we adding? Are we subtracting? Because this is similar to what you're gonna find on the test, alright? There's going to be a question that is asked, and when you look at the answer key, there's gonna be, for example, let's, let's say you thought product meant to divide, right? You would divide fourteen divided by seven, you would, you would choose B. Alright, did we get any B? Yep. Right, so somebody said B, right? So what you did there was divide fourteen divided by seven. Let's say you thought product meant subtraction. You would do fourteen minus seven, and there would be, these are what I call trap answers, okay? There's always trap answers, alright? You would choose seven, cuz fourteen minus seven is seven, alright? Don't fall for these trap answers. That's why a lot of y'all actually do no math, right? However, you're failing your test because you keep choosing trap answers, alright? Answers that are waiting for you to, it's actually well-thought-out answers, right? Even though they're the wrong answers. So, product means multiplication, alright? Product means multiplication. So, let's multiply. We got fourteen multiplied by seven, alright? Seven times four, what y'all got? Seven times four, I got twenty-eight. Seven times one is seven, plus two is nine. Alright, for an answer of D. D. Alright, this is really tricky. It can be really tricky. Alright, that's why I'm here to try to break it down for you. It can be really tricky. Okay, if what I'm saying here sounds like a foreign language, eh, we'll, we'll work through it, okay? We'll get better and we'll get better over time. Alright? So, product means multiplication. Alright, y'all, new question is up. New question is up. Thirty seconds is on the clock. What is the sum of thirty-four and twenty-six? This is the pace that I want y'all to be moving with, man. Twenty seconds left. Okay, this is the pace. When you see the question, start, start working through it. Start working through it. You will realize how much time you don't have to be wasting, okay? Come on, y'all, come on. Try to beat the timer. Okay, not many answers. I'll put the timer back up again, an additional thirty. Alright? Try to beat the timer. Let me tell you already, whenever we're dealing with the word sum, we're doing addition. Alright, it's addition. So what's being asked of you is thirty-four, instead of multiplication, we're adding plus twenty-six. For those of y'all who got the timer beat, man, y'all better come back on this channel and let me know what you scored on your, on your test, alright? So here we're adding four plus six, we got ten, we're gonna carry our one. Eh, one plus three is four, plus two is six. Look in our answer key, we got something waiting for us here, C. Alright, C is going to be the correct answer. Am I gonna post this to view it again on my, on my channel? Yeah. Yes, I will. Most likely. Let me just say that, most likely. Alright, so, Abigail answered D, it looks like? Let me see why, eight hundred and eighty-four. How did you get to eight hundred and eighty-four? Did you multiply these things together? Eh, if I had a calculator, I would cheat, but let's, let's see. Alright, I don't know if you multiplied, or you could just let me know if you multiplied. Right, so what'd you do? Six times four. Does, does that equal eight hun, y'all already did that? Y'all, y'all multiplied these two things together? Alright, so we have twenty-four. Eighteen, nineteen, twenty. We have eight. We have six. I think I did that right, even though I was rushing. Four, eight. Yep, sure did. So, what do we call this? This is a trap answer, alright? I forgot who answered. But eh, this is a trap answer. They were counting on the fact that you wouldn't realize that this is asking for the sum. Sum always means you are adding. What you did here was you found the product of thirty-four and twenty-six, alright? So product means product means multiplication, sum means addition, not the same thing. Alright, so technically, you got the right answer, it's just that you were solving the wrong question. You did the math correctly, which is why I'm saying a lot of y'all a lot of y'all can do math correctly, okay? You could, it's not your math that's the issue, it's the comprehension maybe of the of the question, alright? However, the correct answer, C sixty. I hope I'm not losing my classroom here. Alright, y'all following me? Alright, are y'all with me? Y'all understanding, y'all tracking? Nah, I don't think. I think I'm losing half my classroom. Alright. So, let's do this. Let's, let's do this one. What is the sum of one hundred and thirty-three and fifty-two? What's the key word here? Oh, my timer, y'all want a timer, huh? Let's do a minute this time. Okay, beat the beat the timer. Yep, sum, we're, we're, sum, which means addition. Spot on. Spot on, spot on, spot on. So, begin to add, alright? Let's beat that timer. Alright, we got some answers coming in already. Good stuff, good stuff. I hope it's the right answer. In a case like this, where you got time, you've already solved, double-check your work. Double-check your work, right? I'm looking at, it looks like we got, what? Twenty seconds left, give or take? Alright, so I see B. Some of y'all are saying B, yep. Just good. It looks like we're coming down on the last eh, the last of our timer. Alright? Let's see how we're looking. Question is asking what? What is the sum of one hundred and thirty-three and fifty-two? Key word here, sum. When it comes to math, you're going to have to learn terminology. Okay, it looks like it looks like majority of the people are tracking. You're going to have to do, you're gonna have to learn terminology, alright? So whenever we're dealing with sum, always addition. Alright, so now that we know what we're doing, we're just going to add one hundred and thirty-two eh, three. One hundred and thirty-three plus fifty-two, right? Three plus two is gonna give you five. Automatically, if we didn't even move forward, we already know one answer ends with five, right? For some of y'all who maybe it's crunch time and, and you're about to run out of time, that's one way to do it. That, you're guessing, but you're making an educated guess, alright? But let's continue. Three plus five is eight. And then one plus zero is one, giving us the answer of B, one hundred eighty-five. Can we do fractions? I would love to do fractions, okay? I would love to do fractions, I'd love to do algebra, I'd love to do percentages, decimals, ratios, proportions, I would love to do that. I think though, that if I jump into that eh, it, it wouldn't help the majority of people that are watching at this moment, right? But that's the goal. The goal is to come on here and just jump into, you know, figuring out improper fractions and how to convert fractions into eh, into percentages and decimals and all that fun stuff, alright? So, that's the goal. So stay tuned for that, for that content. Which, which reminds me, if you, if you guys have not subscribed to the channel, you're doing yourself a disservice. If you got a test coming up, and you have not subscribed to the channel, take a second, go over to my channel, it's free to click a button, a subscribe button, alright? So, subscribe to my channel so that way you're notified every time I'm going live, alright? Cuz sometimes I just, I go live if I'm, if I'm feeling inspired, okay? Also, I'll be going live, like I told y'all, I'll be going live either five days a week, four days a week, you know, if there's a holiday, it could be three days a week, right? On my website, simbaalexander.com, okay? I'll put it in the chat. It's ten-dollar study session, so majority of the time of me going live, it's on my own website, alright? I go live, you know, I might go live once a week, once every two weeks on YouTube. Eh, this is just one of those weeks where I happen to go live twice, same week, back-to-back, alright? But if you want study sessions like every single day, an hour or so, go and sign up for those ten-dollar study sessions, alright? It's gonna be tailor-made so that way we can do things like fractions, we can do things like algebra, eh, because we've already knocked the basics out of the way, alright? So whoever that helps, go ahead and head over to my website after you hit that subscribe button, alright? So, let's see. Man, where does the time go? Man, where does the time go? Alright, so, product means multiplication, sum means addition? Hmm, somebody eh, somebody type in the comment section, what you think this word here means, difference? What is the difference of forty-four and eighteen? The difference, the difference. Alright, Caleb says divide. Kame or Kane says what, what time, what, what time do I, what time are we going live throughout the week? I'm not sure. Alright, Rex says subtract. What time? Most likely around seven to eight o'clock, same time that we're doing eastern time. So that way people on the west coast can also participate. Alright, what is the difference of forty-four and eighteen? Alright, so let me let y'all know. When we talk about difference, we are going to be subtracting. If you know what to do, the question becomes easy, alright? We got, we got answers already starting to come in. Answers are coming in, alright? The difference of forty-four and eighteen. Twenty-six, we got twenty-six as an answer. We got A. Alright, and it looks like y'all beat the timer, alright? Good, so we're cooking. Cooking with Crisco. Alright, so we know that we're subtracting, alright? So this becomes easy. Forty-four minus eighteen. Forty-four minus eighteen. Jusu Kar, yes. I sure can. Let me eh, let me knock out this question, I'll type it in there for, for y'all, and I'll see if I can pin it so it doesn't get lost. Forty-four minus eighteen. What we're going to do is subtract. This is also something that gets a lot of people for some reason, okay? Subtraction in this format. We cannot sub, we cannot subtract eight from this number four, meaning this number four eh, I'm sorry. Eight is too big to take out of four, alright? So we're gonna have to borrow, if y'all remember that. Trying to jog y'all, y'all's memory. Alright, so we're gonna borrow from this four over here. We're gonna take one from that four, that's gonna become a three. And this fourteen I'm sorry, that four will become fourteen. Y'all remember that from school? I hope y'all remember that. Alright, that four is gonna become a fourteen. Now, we can take eight from this fourteen, alright? So fourteen minus eight six. Okay, three minus one, two. For y'all that beat the timer and you answered A, man, y'all are ready. Okay, y'all are doing quite well. Alright, answer being A, twenty-six. The reason was, sometimes I pause after questions is just to see if there's any questions, but I don't see any questions, so I think y'all are, are tracking, alright? Good. Let's do like one more, one or two more, cuz I said I wasn't gonna be on here for two hours tonight. Alright, so, let's see. I think y'all are tracking. We already did, hmm, did we do this? I don't remember if we started off with this, right? But, when y'all see the word product, just type in the chat section, what function is that? Product. We're not gonna solve this one, actually. Caleb, multiply, yep. Is that Salima? Salima, multiply, yep. Kane. Kame, hope I'm saying one of those right. Times, yep. Alright, when we Alright, when we talk about the word sum, what's happening there? Sum. When we talk about the word sum. Alright, perfect. Adding, perfect, when we talk about When we talk about the word difference, what's happening? This is very important stuff, alright, it doesn't look like like it now, since we're just doing foundational, you know, relatively easy que- It will come into play later on, especially when you're doing things, fractions and things like that, alright? Arithmetic reasoning and things like that, okay, when we talk about the word difference. I see some saying subtract, I see some saying Multiply. Alright, let me do this really quick, somebody add asked for the Website. Alright, boom, so when we're talking about the word difference, we are subtracting, alright? Let me see, I don't think we've even touched division. Alright, so, so y'all know, this word here quotient means that we're dividing. So go ahead, let's solve this question. Alright, what is the quotient of eighty-one and nine? The quotient of eighty-one and nine. Because we know we're dividing, this should be very easy. Right, it should be very easy, what times nine is eighty-one? Alright, so we got some people saying nine, we got some people saying B. Alright, I couldn't agree more. Alright, Caleb asked a great question. Let me see if I can bring that question back. The question is, will the big number go inside? In this case, yes, the big number will go inside, alright, in this case. So you should have the big number on the inside, right? In traditional dividing, small number goes on the outside. Then you would ask yourself, how many times does nine fit into eight? It doesn't, so you're gonna ask yourself, how many times does nine fit into eighty-one? And in a case like this, like I told y'all, this is where knowing your times tables comes in handy. I think as quickly as I seen y'all answering, it's not because y'all did long form math, it's just because you knew your times tables, right? Nine times nine is eighty-one. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think y'all just did this based off of memory, knowing your your times tables. Alright, so the answer is nine, nine times nine, eighty-one. There's no remainders, you know that you got the right answer. Okay, when you subtract these out, there's no remainders. Alright, any more questions? Okay. Alright, let's do this. For those of y'all who go by memory, alright? What is the quotient of two hundred and four and four, alright, I don't expect y'all to To be going off of memory on on this one. What is the quotient Of Two hundred and four and four? Alright, Salima says D, matter of fact, I'd man, answered before I even put a timer up, alright, so that's good. So, telling you, some people can solve this in their, in their Uh, brain, without having to write anything down, just by looking at the numbers. Right, so we know that we're gonna, I'll tell y'all after this timer runs out, actually. So, we got Mario saying D, alright, what y'all think, two hundred and four and four? Two hundred and four and four, it looks like they're going to war with you here, Salima. Two hundred and four and four. Alright, looks like they got your back. Alright, timer's running out, so if you haven't solved it already, Try to beat the timer, one minute. One minute, the quicker you can get accurate answers, is the quicker you can move on to the next question. What is the quotient of two hundred and four and four? Alright, time's up, so let's go ahead and solve this. So quotient means that we're dividing, I think we can agree on that. Quotient means that we're dividing. Alright, so, perfect explanation, alright? Quotient means that we're dividing, so if somebody asks, does a big number go on the inside? Since you asked me, let me ask you, does the big number go on the inside, or does it go on the outside? Somebody go ahead and uh, answer that for me. Is two hundred and four going on the inside, or is it going on the outside? Alright? Alright, that's called check on learning, to see if y'all are paying attention, okay? Yes, it goes on the inside, alright, the four will go on the outside. For the person who asked me, does the big number go on the inside, my answer was, in this case, yes, right? Because if we're for like this question here, this is asking, what is the quotient of two hundred and four and four? But when we start getting into percentages, right, and the question is, What percent is four of two hundred and four? What's going to happen is the two hundred and four is gonna go on the outside, and the four is going to be on the inside, okay? When we start dealing with percentages, we're gonna see it flip like this, alright? Just to give y'all a sneak peek of what's happening. But in this case, when we're just solving, not for percentages, but we're solving for What the answer is, right? The big number goes on the inside, small number goes on the outside. Now, this was explained perfectly, can four go into two? No, four can't fit into two, alright? So, we have to figure out how many times four can fit into twenty, alright? Four can fit into twenty, a total of five times, how do I know that? Cuz I know my multiplications, right? Four, five times four is twenty. Right, when we subtract these out, Twenty minus twenty is zero, okay, we're gonna bring this four down. Four goes into four, a total of one time, one times four is four, there's no remainders. So it's only with the percent It goes outside, yeah, whenever we're dealing with percentages, it'll go on the outside, okay? It'll go on the outside. Alright? Oh, my bad, D is going to be the correct answer. D is going to be the correct answer. Seems like y'all wanna learn about percentages, alright, we'll get into it, we'll get into it. We will get into it. Somebody said add zeros, which is absolutely correct, if we're deal- I don't wanna confuse the audience, alright? But yes, if we're dealing with percentages, Man, alright, let's do this, this is gonna be our last question anyways, alright? So, let's just say for kicks and giggles, alright, extra credit. What is the percentage, you know, of Two hundred and four and four, right? So I already told you, two hundred and four will go on the outside. Four will go on the inside, obviously, two hundred and four can't fit into four, so what we do is we would put a decimal here, we'd add a zero. Okay, two hundred and four doesn't fit into Uh, forty, we'd add another zero, right, and so on and so forth, and so on and so forth, until we get Something that two hundred and four can fit into. Two hundred and four fits into four hundred, a total of one time, okay? One times two hundred and four is two hundred and four, we do our math, so on and so Alright, until we figure out what percentage this is. Okay, since this is not the question, I read this, I was just trying to tell, I was just trying to answer a previous question that y'all asked, okay? Does the big number always go on the inside? Not always, there are some times where the big number will go on the outside, okay? So if you're just trying to find the answer, like, you know, two hundred and four divided by four, Yes, big number goes on the inside, okay, but when we deal with percentages, it'll go on the outside. Hey, what time are the sessions and are they recorded? So the sessions, like I'm saying, is gonna be like seven o'clock eastern time. Right, seven o'clock eastern time, no later than eight o'clock eastern time, alright, just so I can accommodate, You know, whoever feels, whoever wants to uh, to join. Alright, I should be going live tomorrow, but I I won't be going live on YouTube, so Going live tomorrow will be for the people that want extra help, alright? The people who like this, for example, you know, didn't know that For percentages, you were gonna be putting the big number on the on the outside, alright, for people who struggle with times tables. Because it's separate from YouTube, I can kinda take my time to answer all the questions that You know, some of y'all may not be typing in the in the chat section, okay? So that's why I have specific study sessions. Let me tell you, as it pertains to passing your ASVAB test, you can pass your ASVAB test with the videos that I have on YouTube. Okay, I have enough videos for you to be studying and just simply pass. But my website is for people who, no, they don't just wanna pass, they're actually trying to get the best score possible, so Maybe they can already pass, you know, um, and they're trying to get maybe a fifty and above, or you know, You know, things that they learned fifteen years ago in school, they just need a little bit of a refresher, so I understand, the point of it being a paid course, ten dollars really, is next to free. But the point of it being paid is cuz I'm not looking for everybody like I am if I was going live on YouTube. I'm going, looking for people that just want that extra, that extra boost, alright? That extra boost, so In this week's schedule, it should be going live like Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, if I'm not mistaken. Alright. Man, I kept y'all here, nine thirty eastern time. Go ahead and comment one more time in a in the chat section, what branch of service are y'all trying to join? So I remember seeing some air force, right? Some air force, I I remember seeing some, any crayon eaters in here, any marine marine corps in here, anybody munching on crayons? Right, I remember seeing some uh, some people saying sailors, coast guard, okay? We got coast guard in the house, we got army, alright? Listen, if I'm if I'm poking fun at your uh, your branch, you know, calling air force, cheer force, it's all in love, alright? We're all one team at the end of the day, alright? A lot of people say that, you know, army, army people are stupid and, you know, I'm in the army personally, right? As an army recruiter, so if you're trying to join the army, I am an army recruiter, and I, like I've said in many videos, I can recruit you from anywhere in the country. Okay, so if you want me to be your personal recruiter, what I do is I take, if I take you on as being your recruiter, I help you to pass your ASVAB, I, you know, pass your 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 test. I schedule you to do your physical wherever you are, I schedule you to go to whatever the closest Meps is to you, um, and I uh, enlist you, you're right, virtually. So if you want me to be your recruiter, also, that's on my website as well. You're gonna see something that says, you know, do you wanna join the army, or do you want Simba to be your your recruiter? You could just check yes to that, and then uh, and then the fun begins, alright? Listen, great job, man, great job, I think that uh, for those of you who come here faithfully, Y'all are doing a great job, okay? Y'all are really doing a great job, from the mental warmups to helping your peers in the chat. You know, you should be proud of yourselves, right? So taking an hour a day, forty-five minutes to an hour a day to study, will always help you versus trying to cram everything all at once. So, on that note, it's going on, ten o'clock. We're about to cut it, alright, we're about to cut it, be sure that y'all hit that subscribe button. Um, somebody asked me if I'm gonna be posting this to the channel, why not, right? So you should probably seen the replay somewhere um, on the channel, maybe in the next day or two. Um, and I'll see if I can start coming on YouTube as much as possible. It's just that majority of the time, of my time personally, will be helping those that I'm obviously trying to recruit virtually. And helping the people that are, you know, taking those live sessions on my uh, on my website. If the live sessions don't work with you, work for you, because maybe you're working and you can't make it, I have, there's an online uh, course that I created, so that way you can study at your own time, okay? A lot of people, it's broken down into modules, a lot of people take that, maybe if they're working. Also, that's on my website, right? Or they can't lock down on specific times because of their schedule, right? So there's plenty of resources there to help you. If you wanna take a free practice test, math test, also on my website, alright? So there should be no reason why any of y'all fail your next ASVAB exam, okay? Alright, there's, um, listen, alright, I'm I've put every resource together in the book To try to help y'all out as much as possible, so Yes, on that note, y'all be blessed, y'all have a good um, A good evening, and I'll come on here as soon as I can, so maybe we can knock out the next step In the in the in the module. Always remember that success is made by actions, so get up, go grind, I'll see you next time.